Do I have a motion to open the September 13th, 2023 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Here.
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 Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have contractual matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the September 13th, 2023 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Here.
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 Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one set of minutes from the August 30th, 2023 business meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the board, you may do so by approaching the podium, and please just state your first and last name.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Fisher. I live at Nine Castle Brook Road in West Harrison. Can I?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I am new to the Harrison School District. My son just started kindergarten at Purchase Elementary this past week. We're very excited. We love the district so far in a lot of different ways. I did want to mention one thing that has come up kind of repeatedly with the kindergarten moms that I've spoken with. There's obviously a group chat and a lot of stuff going on. One of the things we were very excited about when we found this district was the Purchase Community House. We are a two-parent family that works. We need after-school care. So we were very excited to find that. In fact, the previous owners of our house were like, this is where you got to send your kids. They have great programming. It's so much fun. We've done the summer program there. So I guess what has come up now is that it has come to our attention that there is no transportation for our five-year-old to get safely from the Purchase School to the Community House. Now, this is like a half-mile walk, you know? Any adult could do it safely, but it is on a very busy street, and I have noticed a lot of distracted drivers on that street. They do cross the post office driveway, which is very busy, and I think you all might remember that a car actually crashed into the post office earlier this year, taking out one of the windows there. So we are kind of at an impasse as to what to do. We signed our son up for five days at the Purchase Community House, and I'm looking at probably having to withdraw that if I can't figure out safe transport for my child. Now, I understand busing might be out of the, you know, out of the realm of possibility this year, but I don't understand why adults can't, you know, escort the young people just up the road and make sure they get there safely. There's been talk of like, the older kids watch the younger kids, but I'm not sure that I'm in a position to say that I trust a third grader to escort my child down the street. So that was something that I wanted to bring to y'all's attention. I know it's been brought up at the Purchase PTA meetings many times and apparently to no avail. My understanding of the situation is that the two parties, Purchase Community House and Purchase School, are kind of at an impasse. And so I am here to appeal to the board on behalf of a ton of moms that I've spoken to. Purchase Community House claims that they don't have the demand for the transport, but I think they do not have the demand because so many moms and dads don't want their kids making the walk, and so they don't sign them up. And I think that, you know, it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing there. So I wanted to make sure that the board was aware and see if there was anything that could be done to get just a couple adults to watch these little ones, you know, five and six-year-olds. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Just to give you an idea of how this works, the superintendent, I'm going to give a quick update if there's no other public participation, and then the superintendent will respond to you in just a couple minutes. Okay, thank you. Okay, it does not appear we have any other public participation. Just quickly moving on to the president's update. Our Harrison High School debate team had an excellent performance at the National Seasonal Opener Tournament. Congratulations to the whole team, but this past weekend, out of a field of 159 debaters from around the country, Jack Borman placed fifth and received his first bid to the Tournament of Champions. Jack Gessner placed ninth, and Reese Podash placed in the top 25. So once again, this debate team is off to a super solid start, and we're excited to continue with our updates and really positive news as the year continues. We had two high school students from thousands of applicants for the 2023 NISMIA All-State Performing Ensembles. Ayamamoto will perform in the Symphony Orchestra on Violin, and Justin Suozzo will sing with a mixed chorus. Noah Birnbaum was named alternate on snare drum for the All-State Concert Band as well. And students traveled to the NISMIA Winter Conference in Rochester for three days of rehearsals with the best student musicians from across New York State. So the experience concludes with a performance in Eastman's historic Kodak Theater under the direction of nationally renowned conductors. So kudos to these three young musicians. Bright, bright horizon for them. Moving on to athletics, our Huskies, our season opener, well, technically, it was prior to the season, just to continue our tradition, but last weekend, or actually, it was already two weeks ago, wasn't it? We had the, it was the 96th edition of the Rye-Harrison-the-Game, as we call it, and the Huskies defeated the Garnets 21-14 behind an excellent team effort. Chris McLaughlin scored two touchdowns out of the three, and Michael Olesley caught a gorgeous 30-yard pass for the winning score. And also, just to mention, during the opening ceremony, Gianluca Santorelli received the prestigious Chris Mello Scholarship Award. So congratulations, second year in a row, the Huskies defeat the Rye Garnets, which was pretty exciting.
Mm-hmm.
The Huskies earned, the Husky Field Hockey earned their first win, the varsity team for the season, 3-0 over Austining, and the goals scored by Chelsea Porto, Harper Canal, which was her first varsity goal, and Gemma Mogavero. They tied White Plains 2-2 with goals scored by Chelsea Porto and Lila Berkery. And the girls defeated Rynek. The goals scored by Harper Canal assisted by Adriana Brajota, Lila Berkery, Gemma Mogavero assisted by Adriana Brajota as well, and Adriana Brajota assisted by Chelsea Porto scored goals. And during the Austining game, actually, Adriana Brajota had a hat trick, assist from Lila, Juliana Waisberg, and Anna Youngstrom. And Emma Zella scored her first varsity goal with an assist from Adriana. Adriana's on fire.
She's sick.
And Lila Berkery.
Absolutely. She's mentioned a lot there.
Yeah, scored with an assist again from Adriana. So excellent start to the varsity field hockey.
Mm-hmm.
The boys varsity soccer team defeated Maia Pack 4-1. Jason Viola, Josua Brew, each scored two goals. Zach Foster, Otaru Tananaka, each had two assists, and Luke Pretzrizzella had four saves. The Huskies also defeated RC Ketchum 4-1. Ellis Boyle had two goals, Jason Viola a goal, and Josua Brew one goal, and Luke Pretzrizzella has four saves as well. Jake Cantian and Zach Foster had two assists. So awesome start. The Huskies, the varsity soccer team also defeated Portchester 1-0. Jason Viola scored the game, and it was the only game scored during the entire game. It's a big shootout to the goalkeeper, Luke, for doing a fantastic job.
Yeah, he's having a great season so far.
The girls varsity soccer team defeated Clarkstown South 3-1. Parker Gates had two goals, and Stella Perini a goal, and the Huskies are currently 2-1. The girls swim team defeated a combined team of Henry Hudson and Croton Harmon by a score of 50 to 42 to open the season. And the girls volleyball team started the season with a 2-0 record, so they're off to a solid start as well. The sports are in full force ahead. And I know that tomorrow night, I think all elementary schools have back-to-school night.
That's right.
I believe somewhere around 6:45 they begin.
Check the school calendar. I don't remember.
Oh, Harrison Ave, thank you, Kelly. Harrison Ave is 6:30, and Preston Parsons and Purchase begin at 6:45. And it's an excellent opportunity to meet your teachers, hear from your principals, and just get a sense of the school building and where your children will be learning all year.
Actually, you finally got a chance at a middle school back to school.
I know. That's great. Yeah, last night, we had the LMK sixth-grade open house, and it was great. My older daughter was here during COVID, and I didn't get a chance to experience that. So it was so well-attended, and I was really blown away by how organized these teachers are. And even though it's such a big school, and you're stepping from elementary school into middle school, and it seems so overwhelming, they really make it such a tight-knit, small feel where you really can tell that the teachers have such a personalized learning experience for the kids. So I was, I was really impressed. I'm with that, Dr. Will.
Well, thank you. We have a lot to cover tonight, but I want to start by welcoming Trudy to the community. And I can assure you that the problem you're citing has been a challenge for my 22 years as superintendent, and it's eminently solvable, and it's been solved multiple times. As a matter of fact, the former board president, the person who appointed me board president, was the first to take it on. How can I be helpful here? Some of what has to happen has to come from the Purchase Community House. But for many, many years, almost for a decade, the Purchase Community House contracted with a bus service that took the kids every day, and especially important in winter, I know you mentioned safety, but sometimes in the winter, it's even more treacherous. And we accommodated and facilitated that, and we're happy to work with them again and put them in contact with our own service provider. We are unfortunately not permitted to provide a service, even an escort, to one set of students if we're not providing it to every set of students, which would mean every child across the district that has to get from point A to point B. But that does not mean that we can't help you. We are more than willing. Mr. Whipple will work with the Purchase Community House if they're willing. One year, I even think the parents decided to go outside of the Purchase Community House because they didn't like the bus service that they had contracted, and they contracted with their own. As long as we get an insurance voucher and we can set all that up with you, then the parents can in fact contract a service to move the kids from point A to point B. Unfortunately, I can't provide that service unless I provide it to every elementary-age child who requires moving from the end of the school day to some other place for childcare, whether that's to a home or to another facility. So I'd be happy to accommodate a meeting with key players, but I think the first and most important thing is, if you're willing, I'd love you to reach out to the person in charge and have him contact me immediately, and I will facilitate him meeting with first student, and we can, I'm sure, arrange safe transportation at a very reasonable cost, which is what we've done in the past. So I'm, this is not directed at you. I'm surprised that no one shared that solution with you, which was in place for over a decade. During COVID, lots of things changed. People kept their kids home, but we want to help. There are certain limitations that we have, because if we do it for one, we do it for all. We're not permitted to do that. We couldn't afford to do that, but we're not saying to you, we're not willing to find a way to get the Purchase Community House to work with families to find a solution. So please feel free to have him contact me immediately tomorrow, and I'll get the wheels in motion. You can talk to Tim. Right now, we're not, we're not in dialogue. Tim, maybe you can meet with her before the meeting's over, or even now, and I'll go on with my update. So you can ask him any question you want directly. So there are some other things to talk about. I just want to do two things that I think are really critically important to me. I want to commend our entire faculty and staff for an incredible summer. Kids had an extraordinary experience. We serviced over 1,500 children using federal dollars, some of which will unfortunately go away, and we're going to figure out how to keep our most essential programs in place. But also, we finished a lot of work this summer. We are just about to complete the full air conditioning of our oldest school building, the Parsons Memorial School. I would like to remind people that we used our COVID federal dollars to improve ventilation in all six of our buildings, and we did so really effectively. We're going to not leave $1 on the table to improve the air quality in all of our schools. All of our schools received major upgrades to their facilities. Sometimes they had cafeterias, auditoriums. The Preston Auditorium, for example, has finally come online and is fully air-conditioned. So I just want to thank all of our employees. They work around the clock. Everybody else goes away for the summer. Our employees don't go away. They just work harder and smarter. So thanks to them. Opening day was one of our best. We celebrated the lives of employees past and present and employees lost. It was a meaningful experience for all of us. I thanked the board members that were able to attend for attending, and I reminded the faculty, as I remind myself, that we have an obligation to see everybody using our hearts and minds so that we see them fully for all the value that they bring. And the message is always the same in this community. Your title is meaningless to us. It's the value of the contributions you bring and the lives you affect. And we celebrated the lives of all of our employees for the incredible work that they do all the time. I am just extraordinarily proud to sit in this chair. I need to say that to you. I also want to commend our teachers, because there was a lot of concern about the heat on the first day of school. And I visited every school on that day, and it's interesting, I didn't see one child complaining about the heat, but I saw lots of teachers attending thoughtfully to the needs of kids. They felt so cared for and excited to be at school that it didn't seem to be an issue. So again, I just want to thank the faculty, staff, and my leadership team for always making kids central to everything that they do. So I'm excited about that. You may have noticed there's a lot of work going on at Harrison Avenue. The roof project is almost done, and you'll be seeing that scaffold go away pretty soon, and that was another successful project that we completed during these summer months. But tonight is a really monumental night for us. In a minute, you'll hear from Mr. Sullivan, who is chairing his second big facilities bond committee for this Board of Education, and the board, my administrative team, many of the field folks, the principals as well, have spent two years trying to figure out how we can make our schools safer, healthier, and how they can accommodate what we believe was going to be a dramatic surge in enrollment over the next several years. So before we launch into the presentation, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Sullivan to introduce what they're about to hear. Thank you, Rob.
Okay, thanks, Lou. Yeah, can we go to the next slide?
You certainly can.
Okay, so very first question is, why are we even talking about a bond referendum? It started, as Lou mentioned, several years ago. The facilities committee, composed of currently Kelly Mangon and Kelly Kozak and myself, started looking at our building's conditions survey from 2020. They come out every five years, so that's sort of a starting point, looking at the condition of our six schools. And as Lou also mentioned, top of mind always for us is safety concerns throughout the district, and we're always focused on how can we improve safety for our students and faculty. In addition, when we're trying to project what our future space needs will be, where we, every year, commission a demographic study, trying to predict what our future enrollment will be, they tend to predict only out another 24 months from the current time, and their predictive value is sometimes not that great, but it's a good tool for us. But we also looked at, we can all look around everywhere in the town and see this tremendous, both approved and pending, development of housing in the town, and we considered how that's going to affect our future needs as well. And finally, we, of course, during the whole time, we're working with the superintendent, the building administration, our architects, and the board. Next slide, please. So our findings, what have we learned after the last several years? Safety, again, is a key issue. We've looked at various aspects in the various buildings, and what we need to do to improve safety as best we can with current technology that's available. But a big finding was surging enrollment. Unlike some districts in the area, we're predicting to have an all-time, all-time-high enrollment of over 3,700 students this coming year, including an increase just starting in this June, kind of surprising increase in the number of students. And again, as I alluded to earlier, the current projection is higher than what our demographers projected. Next slide. And in terms of development in the town, there's currently over 1,800 new housing units either built, approved, or pending. And to accommodate the students we expect that might come along with all those new housing units, we're going to need additional classroom expansions. And then finally, throughout the process and in the background, we're always considering just infrastructure improvements, keeping the conditions of the buildings in good shape, including particularly a big problem that's been pending for quite some time is window replacements. We did some of that in our last bond referendum, but it's a continuing, continuing problem, and they're very expensive. HVAC, we've also been able, recently been able to do a lot of work in air conditioning a lot of our buildings, and there's still more to be done there. And then utility work, so improving our electrical panels and water and sewer, sewer lines that need to be updated periodically. And those were our findings, and then we worked with the superintendent and other building assistant superintendents, Tim and our architects, to come up with a plan, which you're going to hear about now.
Well, thank you, Rob. And, you know, I'm reminded, I live in a 1939 Sears home. I think I'm on my third roof. If you don't attend to the basics, your house falls down on your head. And so some of these things are not very glamorous, like sewers and electric, but they're all necessary. But there is a lot going on in our district. We're going to talk a lot about the demographic study, and it's easy to criticize the demographers. In fact, I'm not here to say that they are missing the mark. There are certain things you cannot calculate in a statistic. Why are people choosing Harrison? We think it's the quality of our schools. Our mayor would say he thinks it's the quality of our schools. We have a lot of anecdotal evidence that people, we're one of the few districts in the entire region where the enrollment is going up. The national trend, the local trend, is enrollment is going down. So let's just talk about a couple things. Here's what we're going to focus on. We're going to improve safety and security of students and staff. That needs to be done whether or not we add one child. So that's important. There are some parts of this that are driven by enrollment, and some parts that are driven by common sense. But we do see surging enrollment. We did not expect to add an extra kindergarten to Purchase School or to Harrison Avenue School. We had to do both during the summer because the demographer did not predict accurately, and we expect more. And while we're talking tonight about new development, none of the new enrollment is yet the result of the new development. These are just houses turning over and people coming here with lots of children, which we're excited about. So it does provide for additional classroom space across the system, and you'll see more about it in a minute. It also reclaims some of the old space and redevelops it, making it useful in some ways. We still have lots of challenges with ADA compliance. If you're a child in a Parsons School, you can't get to the third-floor library. If you're a child in the kindergarten in the Preston School, you can't get to the cafeteria. Those are unacceptable circumstances, and we need to fix them. And the infrastructure, the roof, the sewer, electrical upgrades, those all have to be addressed if we're going to maintain safe and healthy buildings. Safe means they're safe in every possible way. We have to do all of this in a very thoughtful way because we don't want to overburden our taxpayers. And we've been very mindful over the years never to pierce the tax levy cap. We've never gone above the limit. And we have had very few bond referendums, one in my 22 years, and that one was a no-impact referendum because it didn't add to the tax burden, it just lined up against retiring debt. So we take very seriously the idea of balancing the needs of students with being fiscally responsible. So what are we going to do? Let's go slide by slide. Safety and security, some of this is a theme. You're going to hear it a lot. We're going to create more secure vestibules at each elementary school. They already exist at the middle and high school. We're going to eliminate the need for students to exit any building to attend a class. So right now, Purchase, they leave to go to the portables. At Preston, they leave to go to the portals. At the middle school, they leave to go to the portables. We're doing away with all of that. We're going to add security film to every first-floor walk-up window. I'm not going to talk too much about that. You can figure out what that means. We're going to relocate and reorient the main offices to control visitor access to the buildings. In some of our schools, you enter the building and you traverse the school to get to the main office. We're going to move the main office so that when a visitor comes in, they're in a contained space. In some schools, this is particularly talking about Purchase School, we're going to remove the portables and put the playgrounds out of the sight of the general public. So I'm excited about that. Every single school will get an upgrade in security cameras and door security devices. I don't ever talk about the details of that in public, other than to say, we're going to harden it. Quick overview, Harrison High School is going to get four core classrooms. If you're familiar with the high school, on something called the Rose Garden. A new STEM center. I said it was refurbished. It was built in 1974. It wasn't ever refurbished. A new fitness center, a multipurpose fitness space, because cheerleading and wrestling don't even fit at the high school anymore. Harrison Avenue School has some of the most inferior spaces where current instruction is happening, so it'll get four new classrooms, a new music and art wing, and a new library, which is understudied. Parsons, we're going to open up the third floor, put six new classrooms, a net of five, because we're going to have to reclaim one for the elevator, make the school handicap accessible. Purchase Elementary School, the portables go away. They're going to get four new classrooms. When you take away the portables, it's a net of four, and a brand-new cafeteria appropriately placed, not in the heart of the school, but on the field area. Preston Elementary School, five new classrooms, a net of four, a new main, a nurse's office, and a whole lot more. This is just the big overview. I'm going to get into the details. Harrison High School gets a new STEM center. It gets a brand-new fitness center, multipurpose room, and it gets four classrooms. And in addition, we're going to turf the varsity baseball-soccer field because that gets the most use, and we're not able to really keep it active and vital because it doesn't get enough so-called rest. Purchase Elementary, I mentioned, a new cafeteria. Lewis M. Klein got the most last time. You'll hear more about that later, but it's getting a meeting and training space. It's also getting an upgraded cafeteria servery, but that's not on this slide. Some of the redevelopment relocation, we're going to improve security at the main entrances and redevelop main entrance nurse's office at Preston, Parsons, and Harrison Avenue. We did this at Purchase in the last go-round, but Purchase is going to get a new exterior vestibule. We're going to redevelop band art spaces at Purchase and Preston. Purchase cafeteria, if we have our way, will become the music suite, and the cafeteria will go where it's appropriately placed. We're going to redevelop the boys' and girls' locker room at the high school. And some of these may be new terms to some of you, but we're going to relocate and renovate the art rooms at the high school, phase classroom, and the AP offices at Harrison High School. Some of those are security-based, and some of those are programmed. Some of those are security-based, and some of those are program-based. Our phase program is a life skills program. We want to bring the kids together in a larger setting so they have adjacent rooms, and they can move from both classrooms to a life skill setting, so we're excited about that. Big change here at the middle school is going to be to increase the size of the servary. LMK is growing, we'd like kids to have more time to eat lunch, we need to be a little bit more robust in the servary. Dr. Lee, join me. This is where I get to take a break in my voice. Brian's going to narrate for you what he's been carefully monitoring for us for almost a decade now, other duties as assigned that never went away. So he's going to tell us a little about what we know is going on in the town of Harrison.
Sure, Dr. Will. Well, I think this is a really good news story for the community because the headline, I think, here is that people appear to be very excited to move to Harrison, and there's a lot of new housing development that goes with that. So part of our work with our demographer in the town of Harrison is to try to monitor housing units that are coming online at some point in the near future. So this, the data that you see on the screen is actually from this past November, the most recent data that we were able to obtain from the town, and we're in the process of trying to update it for the upcoming year. But when we collected the data, we look at this in terms of the four attendance zones. So on the left side of the screen, we see Harrison Avenue, Parsons, Preston, and Purchase. And of course, these housing developments don't just affect those elementary schools, these are attendance zones, so some of these kids, of course, are going to middle school or high school. But at that time, we had 151 housing units where we had certificates of occupancy issued. So in that case, that means families are ready to move in and families are ready to occupy. We had 600 units where the building permits had been issued and were maybe in the early stages of construction, not yet ready to be occupied. And then in the right column, you see the number of units under planning review, 1,113 new units. And as you can see, the vast majority of those in the Purchase Elementary School area where a number of large commercial real estate properties are being rezoned and redeveloped for residential housing. Notably, for example, the Renaissance project is going to yield 760 units, new residential units. The demographers attempt to predict the number of students that will be yielded from each of these, and that's partly based on square footage and birth rates and other data and statistics, but it's a very difficult number to predict, as you said at the outset of your comments. But I think an important takeaway here is Harrison's a growing community, it's a vibrant community. We have expecting about 1,800 new housing units, and we can only anticipate that that will likely yield a number of new students in our schools. So we're doing our best to plan for that, but it is an admittedly inexact science. We don't have the crystal ball to know exactly when people will move in, how many children will come with them, and we do our best to try to predict that. But we'll go on to the next slide, please. So just to give you a perspective on just some of the growth in our enrollment, so this is the total enrollment in the district. As you can see, back 2012, 2013, we were a little over 3,500 students. It's steadily increased. If we were to overlay a trend line on this, we would see it going up from the lower-left to the upper-right. And in 2019, 20, we had our high peak of enrollment at 3,653, and we've since dramatically left that behind, as we stand today at 3,756 students. And that's noteworthy because a number of the neighboring school districts around us are actually witnessing declining enrollment. I talk to my colleagues regularly about this, and they're commenting about that frequently. That's certainly not the case in Harrison. And it's not just the result of new development and new building, but it's also housing turnover. And I can say more about that in just a moment. So this slide may be a little difficult to read, it's the enrollment data over about a 12-year period of time, but what's noteworthy, I think, is if we're looking at that chart toward the top of the screen, you'll notice toward the right, it references our enrollment, 3,625 students as of June 1st of 2023, so really just a few short months ago. And we're now about 131 students above that number. So from June to September, we've picked up 131 students. And also noteworthy, that's 94 more students than the demographers predicted. And again, it's not that the demographers aren't good at their job or that they don't know how to predict well, but there are things that they can't model in their data. So they can't, for example, account for housing turnover. So when an older couple sells their home to a younger family, that's a very difficult statistic for demographers to try to predict. So too is the number of families that moved to Harrison specifically because of our schools. Families have a choice, where do they wish to move if they're in a position to move? And we find that it seems families are choosing Harrison because of the quality of our programs, our international baccalaureate program notably among those highlights. And again, it's a great news story, it just means that we have to try to plan best as we can for that increase in enrollment. This last, not quite the last slide on enrollment, but this gives a view of each elementary school and how it's tracked over the last four years. And a few highlights to mention here, as you can see, the far-right column indicates how high above or below the demographic projection we are in each particular school. So, Dr. Will, you mentioned earlier, we added an elementary section at Harrison Avenue and at Purchase School because of more kindergarteners than the demographers could predict. In the case of Harrison Avenue, as a school, we're up 17 students, and Parsons, we're up 42 students beyond what the demographers predicted. Preston, down just slightly or even. Preston's Purchase School, 27 students more than projected by the demographers. High School, 13 more. And I should mention, our sixth grade at the middle school is one of our largest incoming sixth grades, and that follows a very large sixth grade last year. So as you notice, we went from 818 kids in the middle school to 868 in just one year.
And just a pause there for one second because you pointed out something that's so important for the community. We really pride ourselves on trying to keep our class sizes competitive. We try to keep them at 22. And Brian, literally, I'm not joking, tracks these things in the summer almost day-to-day. But the 42 at Parsons typically would have required us to add a class size, we just got really lucky. The spread of where the kids landed in the grade levels allowed us to just teeter on the edge of adding those, whereas at Purchase and at Harrison Avenue, it was predominantly kindergartners. So I just want to pause there because Purchase is the place that's going to receive the majority of the development, followed closely by Parsons. Those are places that are already space-constrained. And so, people say to me, what are you going to do if the bond doesn't go through? There's only really one answer. I can't keep class sizes low if I don't have classrooms. So it will have an effect on the quality of our program, which is really the student-teacher ratio that we pride ourselves on, but thank you for that. Another slide? You ready?
Last slide.
Yep.
One of the other data points that we track is the number of students who live in our community who attend private schools. And interestingly, as we look at over a 10-year view of this, the numbers pretty dramatically declined. So in 2013, 14, we had 1,157 students, or about 24% of our student population attending private schools. That number as of this past school year is, and the new data for the upcoming year is not available yet, but it was down to 815 students, or 18.36%. And one might wonder, well, how might we attribute a reason for that? And we think that there are a few reasons, you know, there are legacy families that have, many generations maybe have attended private schools, and that's been important to those families. We certainly understand that and honor those traditions. In other cases, we know that there are students moving back to Harrison schools because of the richness of the offerings, the depth of the offerings, particularly at our high school, ranked among the best in the world as an international baccalaureate high school. And we believe that's a draw for families to bring their kids back to public school from private school. Again, a great news story because I think it speaks well of our school community and the work that our faculty does every day, but it's something that we need to try to plan for and anticipate best as we can, which obviously gives rise to the need for the bond referendum.
And it's a particularly interesting data point for us because Harrison has traditionally been very high, as you said, because of legacy families. To reverse this trend is a very compelling piece of data. Recently, you and I were both interviewed by the Journal News about this trend that doesn't fit any of the data. So we have two issues going on here. Everybody else's enrollment's going down, ours is going up. Everybody else's private school's about steady, and ours is on the decline. So all of these variables, plus the building that the town is engaged in, are all coming out simultaneously.
Yeah, and I'll make one last comment to build on what you just said, Dr. Will. The interesting thing is, we look at the data on the new registrants, so new families and new students that are arriving in our schools, and trying to pinpoint exactly their address, we know their addresses, of course, but to see if, whether or not these students are coming from the new developments that are coming online. And the numbers are surprisingly small, given the number of new students that we have. And what that tells us is that it's more housing turnover, older families selling to younger families with children. And it also seems to suggest then that in the near future, as those housing developments come to maturity, that number will only go up as a result of more families in new housing that didn't exist before. So trying to plan for all of that.
Good job, Brian, thank you so much. This is my favorite slide, just so you know. Okay, we're going to get into the actual buildings. Harrison Avenue Elementary School, this is what we found. Rob said we did a study of the conditions. This is what we see. Inadequate security entrance for building visitors, typical of old buildings. You enter up a flight of steps, you go in another flight of steps, by the time you get to the security person, you're in the building. We'd like to change that. Insufficient general classroom space based on the current enrollment. Harrison Avenue is one of our anomalies. There's not a lot of building going on in Harrison Avenue, yet it's the fastest-growing school because of turnover. So go figure. Insufficient classrooms to address the program, support spaces, and potential future enrollment. This, I would say, is one of the weakest areas in our district. Terrible space really for band and chorus classes. I'm not satisfied with it at all. We've made the best of what we can of it, and individual lessons and rehearsal spaces are really not well-done. The library is undersized, it's a converted garage, so that everybody knows, and it doesn't have any flexible space to accommodate more than one class at a time. And exterior, some basic masonry and asphalt repair is necessary. So here's what we're proposing, we're going to create a new secure entrance vestibule, main entrance and security office, relocate the main office and the nurse's office, add security film to first-floor walk-up windows around the entire corridor of the building, wherever there are walk-up windows. We're going to improve the security camera and door access infrastructure, and we're going to add a three-story, eight-classroom and library addition, pave the parking lot, replace various sidewalk sections. Let me show what that looks like. That's an aerial view. So I asked them to do it by floor. The first floor, depending on how we configure, you can see it's a large band room, a large chorus room, and a smaller, two smaller spaces, one for lessons and one for small group. This is the second floor, this is the new library. You can see, it's a large library space and two additional classrooms. And the third-floor addition is three standard classrooms, which would be adjacent right to the existing classrooms on that wing. We could reconfigure this to make it four, this is just the way they're showing it right now. That's what it looks like from the back. Those of you that are familiar with Harrison Avenue School, to your right is the auditorium. Parsons Memorial School, inadequate security entrance, limited student queuing, they have a very tight space when they enter the school. Insufficient classrooms to address the program, support spaces, and any future enrollment growth. No ADA access to the third-floor library and their classrooms up there, or the multipurpose and art room which are above the main office. Original windows are inefficient and beyond their useful life, and we will replace and upgrade the main utility service. So what do we plan to do there? Create a new secure entrance vestibule, main entrance with security office, add security film to the first-floor walk-up windows, improve security cameras and door access, renovate the third floor to create six new classrooms and a resource room. We're going to add an elevator to access the new and the existing third floor, and we're going to add an ADA-accessible lift to the art room. We're going to replace the water main and the sanitary services, pave the parking lot, and replace the windows and masonry. Lots of work going on at the Parsons Memorial School. That's what the third floor will look like, the additional classrooms, that little box in the corner is the elevator. You won't notice much of a change to the exterior of this beautiful historic building because we're just going to be taking the roof off and replacing the roof and adding some height to the third floor. So we think that's really terrific. That is the rear elevator shaft, you can see it will remain historic. We're only required to build up the last floor because we're using an existing tower within the building that's no longer utilized for the elevator shaft. Preston, inadequate security entrance, you can see a theme, insufficient classrooms to address program, support spaces, future enrollment. Obsolete portable classrooms, students exit the building to access these classrooms. Inaccessible kindergarten classrooms and student access to the main building, and an inadequate music space that's actually in the portables. What are we going to do? We're going to create a new secure entrance vestibule, main entrance and security office. We're going to relocate and create new main offices and the nurse's office near the new entrance. Security film to the first-floor walk-up windows, improve security camera and door access, ADA access from the kindergarten wing, remove the portable classrooms and all the associated site work. We're going to add a two-story, five-classroom addition. We're going to replace the water main and the sanitary services, pave the parking lot and sidewalk replacement. Am I wrong, is it a four? It says five here, five classrooms. It's three and two?
Five.
It is five, that's right, yep. I forgot, sorry. So that's the backside, what is currently the backside, what you would consider the rear of the Preston School. You can see that the main and the nurse's office are going to be moved there. You can see that little secure entrance on the left side, on the right side, I'm sorry, and that purple is where the security person will be housed. This is the first-floor addition where you can see the three classrooms. This is the second-floor addition where you can see two additional classrooms, a total of five new spaces. There it is, and I like this rendition, there's been a change there, really well-defined entry point. So you can see that, you know, you can...
Over the next one.
Yep. I like that, right? That really looks well-designed, handicapped access. What's, those windows that you see on the right is the existing kindergarten wing. So we're very excited about that. It will connect one part of the building to the other pretty seamlessly. The kids from kindergarten now can walk that hallway and be at the cafeteria. And if they need to get to the second floor, there's an elevator right there. So quite excited about that. That's what it looks like from the top. Purchase Elementary School has a lot that needs to be addressed. We're going to deal with the inadequate security entrance for building visitors, the portable classrooms are obsolete, as you know, the students have to exit the building to get the class. We're going to relocate the playground behind the new addition to improve safety. Insufficient classrooms to address program and support spaces, potential future enrollment, and an inadequate kitchen and cafeteria, so we're going to be expanding that footprint. What are we going to do? Pretty much what I've said several times tonight. New secure entrance and vestibule with a security office, improve camera security and door access, security film to the first-floor walk-up windows, and a one-story, eight-classroom and kitchen cafeteria addition, relocating the playground and the basketball courts behind the new addition. Going to replace the water main and sanitary services and renovate the old cafeteria to create new music space. What does it look like? Let's see it. That's the aerial view, you can see the classrooms, you can see the hallways and the egress there. New bathrooms right next to the new cafeteria. And that's what it would look like from the front side of the existing parking lot. And you can see, if you look closely, there is an enclosed main entrance outside of the building now, so no visitor can enter without passing through security. LMK had a lot done last time around in 2016. We added an auditorium, cafeteria, exterior facade, turf field, parking lot. People say, why are you not adding new classrooms to the middle school? The middle school has greater flexibility to share classrooms, so it can accommodate some expanding enrollment. We will be improving security to the sixth-grade science wing. Students currently exit the building to access the classrooms, that will go away. The pool dehumidification system is ineffective, it's outdated, it requires ongoing maintenance, we're going to upgrade that. Even though we upgraded the cafeteria last time, it still needs further upgrades, so we're going to deal with some of the inefficiencies in the cafeteria-kitchen setting. And we are lacking for meeting space and professional development space, that will also be put on the campus of the middle school. Here's what we're going to do. Improve security camera and door access, security film to the first-floor walk-up windows, and add a one-story connecting corridor to the sixth-grade science wing, add a one-story meeting space, professional development space, complete Phase 2 of the kitchen renovation, and upgrade the pool dehumidification system. Here you can kind of see where the meeting space, professional development center's going to be right adjacent to the existing science rooms and sixth-grade wing. going to be right adjacent to the existing science rooms and sixth-grade wing. That's the connecting corridor that will make the building one space, so kids don't have to exit. And that's the inside of the meeting space, flexible for teachers, for kids, even for our PTAs. Harrison High School, last and certainly not least. It's, as Brian pointed out, it's growing in enrollment. It's at an all-time high. Insufficient classrooms to address current program and future program. Outdated, undersized classrooms for STEM. The fitness center that we currently have does not service the kids well. It's too small, and we can't hold our cheerleading or wrestling programs on-site. The windows are very inefficient. They're a weird design. They're sort of a crank-out, totally ineffective in this day and age, and the hardware is failing. And we get a lot of use on our fields at the high school. We're not able to keep the grass really generated well because it doesn't get any rest on the varsity baseball-soccer field, so one proposal is to deal with that, and we need to repave some of the parking lot. So here's what we plan to do. Security cameras, door access upgrades, security film to first-door windows, a four-story classroom addition that will go on the last addition we did, just make it bigger essentially.
One story.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Four classrooms. Four stories. No four stories.
One story, four classrooms. And I'll show you a picture. A one-story STEM addition, a one-story fitness addition, and adjacent to it that multipurpose fitness room that you'll see. We're going to relocate and renovate the existing art rooms, phased classrooms, AP offices. Mentioned add the turf field for baseball, soccer. Recreation is there as well. Replace parking lot and sidewalks and complete a partial window replacement. This is what it looks like from the air. That's the field, and you can see the little red areas where things are going to be added. This is our existing, we call it the math/rose garden. You just see that we're adding two classrooms to the end of each corridor. That's what it looks like from the ground level, so actual, it's actually very attractive. This is the fitness center multipurpose space. You'll see some indications of what that looks like from the outside. That's basically facing the baseball field coming out of the hallway by Mr. Galano's office. It repeats the theme of the eyebrow look around the entry points. That's sort of a visual of what the fitness center could look like. We don't yet have a full rendering of what the multipurpose room looks like. It's basically a big square. The turf field, which will require some other retrogrades, retrofits, will be changing the elevations of the bleachers also to make sure people have good sightlines when we ultimately redo that field. This is the STEM center addition. We're still in the design phase of this. We want to make sure it accommodates future and growing needs. We have a growing pre-engineering program, so we want to make sure we design it with that in mind. This is what it looks like from the outside. If you're trying to orient yourself to the far left of the screen, you can see sort of the edge of the guidance suite sticking out, and it basically sits between the student union and the guidance center. So it fits the profile of the building, sort of matches it really well, and we think it'll be a very vital space for our growing STEM program. Overall, this is how the costs break down by building. The total cost is $79.5 million. It includes lots of things. You can see in the small lettering there, construction costs, equipment, design contingency, escalation, consultant fees, and other soft costs, which is the perfect lead-in for our Assistant Superintendent for Business to talk about the financing component, and he's brought some special guests tonight who can give us even more in-depth information. Want me to leave this slide up for now?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
That would be great. Thank you very much. And yeah, I am pleased to introduce a couple of our guests this evening and experts in their field. We have Ben Maslona, and Ben is the Senior Vice President for Fiscal Advisors and Marketing, and they act as the board's municipal advisor for all the financing for this project. He's here this evening, and I'll call on him in a minute to come up and make a few remarks. We also have Dan Birmingham here, and Dan serves as our bond counsel for the school district from Hawkins, Delphfield, and Wood. Dan's been a longtime partner for the school district. He assisted the board for the 2016 bond issue as well.
Quite ably, I might say.
Absolutely. So very happy to have both these gentlemen here and their expertise. So as Lou said, $79.53 million is the proposed bond referendum, and tonight the board will be taking action to approve the resolution to place this on the ballot on November 16th. Dan will give you more information about that in a little bit. If you don't mind going to the next slide. So a few things on, you know, how to finance this size of a project. And, you know, typically over the years, districts would use retiring debt to help finance. At this time, we don't have any retiring debt, but there are needs here available, and we do want to proceed forward. So how can we position ourselves strategically to really set aside some monies to help offset the costs for taxpayers? So we have a couple of things that we've been working on. And to the board's credit, you authorized the voters to approve the creation of a capital reserve fund this past May. And we'll talk more about that in a minute, but we have a capital reserve fund that we can issue monies into when times are, when times are better, and we do better in our budget than we had anticipated. And a perfect example of that, this past year, we had a positive variance with our interest earnings. Interest earnings were far greater than we had budgeted for. And what to do with those one-time earnings better than to put it in a capital reserve for one-time expenses? And that's exactly what we did this past year, and we'll be utilizing some of the capital reserve monies that we have to help offset the debt. The other strategy we plan to use is, in the way of our annual capital appropriation funds, we currently spend about $2 million on annual larger projects. If you will notice, we're using some of these funds to help replace a new roof at the Harrison Ave. School. You can see just across the way, we're also using some of these funds to improve the air ventilation at the Parsons School. So again, we're going to be using these capital, these annual capital funds to help offset debt payments in the future, lowering the principal and interest costs for taxpayers. I'm not going to get into this too much. I'll ask Ben to come up in a second, but, you know, how do we, how do we fund this over a period of time? Because we know the project will take a series of years to complete. And typically, we would issue a series of bond issues over maybe a three- or four-year period. Again, Ben will talk about this more in detail. And when would we be able to start this work? Well, the earliest that we believe we'll be able to start is the spring of 2025. And that's because there are a series of mandatory requirements that we must go through with the State Education Department, the development of plans and specifications that all have to be approved by the State Education Department. So that's our goal. There are some projects we believe we can get up to the state, get approval more quickly than that, but the, most of the work in earnest will begin in the spring of '25. Next slide, if you don't mind.
Oh, hmm. Sorry about that, Tim.
No problem. So again, as I said, $79.53. We're going to be utilizing up to $5 million of our capital reserve to help offset payments. And again, the $2 million in annual capital transfers from our operating budget. At this point, I would like to ask Ben to come up and give you a little bit more information on the estimated tax impact, which we've looked through very closely, and to give the board a good understanding of how that will work. Okay? Ben?
Thank you. Just to reiterate a little bit on the two key items with the $5 million from the capital reserve. You know, it's a tool that many districts use, establishing the reserve, which is voter-approved, and then you have to ask the voters to utilize the money as well. That money will essentially reduce the amount you have to bond, which is key. The other thing it does is it's the first money the district uses. So whereby many districts will pass the capital referendum and immediately have to go out to market to borrow to pay initial startup costs, your district will be able to avoid those initial costs because you have that reserve set aside. As far as the estimated tax impact, a project of this magnitude and with the construction cycle that we see, typically you would issue three bonds, roughly the same size. As Tim mentioned, with construction beginning in the spring of 2025, it is foreseeable the initial bond offering would be in the summer of 2025 to have debt service in summer of 2026, which is the '26-'27 fiscal year. So I think that's an important point. A referendum today does not mean that taxes go up tomorrow. The first tax impact would be in the '26-'27 fiscal year. We then foresee additional bond issues in the summer of '26, in the summer of '27, again, with the tax impact following the year, a year later. The three bond offerings estimated at this time are over a 25-year period, which closely mimic the return of state building aid, which we have calculated at roughly $8.8 million over the term and life of the project, which is significant. And we will work with Tim's office to maximize the amount of state building aid returning to the district. As far as an impact on the average median home of $16,300, we estimate at this time that's about $294. Important to note that that $294 would be phased in over a three-year period, again, beginning in the '26, sorry, '26-'27 fiscal year. Also, in our calculations, we have not included any sort of assessment increase. So this is based on a flat assessment. Any assessment increase within the district means that that $294 would be reduced. And the next slide, please.
Sure.
One thing I wanted to touch on briefly is the borrowing rates, the current market conditions. And first, I would like to give kudos to the Board of Education and the district administration as Harrison Schools is AAA-rated, so you have the highest bond rating from Standard and Poor's. Not all districts can bode that, and so that's a credit to the district. And what that allows you to do is basically borrow money at a lower interest rate than many of your counterparts, which will serve the district residents well in the long run. Based on current market conditions, a AAA-rated 25-year bond is about 3.85%. Important to note, if your rating were to slip, or some of your counterparts, it might be the double-A rated category, that would be at a 4.16%, 31 basis points above your borrowing rate. And I know 31 basis points doesn't sound like much, but what does that actually mean? On your project, that would mean about $3.9 million of added interest expense over your three bond issues. So maintaining that AAA rating, having that highest bond rating, is going to allow you to access the markets at a much better rate than many of your counterparts.
Any questions for Ben? Now that we've kind of paused real quick, or we can continue on and then...
I have one question. Get this over. So in that last, that slide right there, talking about current interest rates for AAA, we wouldn't be borrowing this money for two, three, four years. What are we projecting the interest rates might be then, and how can we be confident that we're accurate?
Correct. So in doing the projections, we built that into the equation. At this time, we are about a half a percent higher than current market conditions, and then that goes up. So Phase One, first bond issue, is just under half a percent conservative. The second bond issue is just over half a percent, and then the third bond issue is over about 3/4 of a percent conservative, so above current market conditions. And as market conditions change, if we get to the time where the first bond is ready to be issued and rates are lower than we had anticipated, we may choose to bond a significantly higher amount and take advantage of the lower interest rate. So the financial plan will continue to be changing to meet market conditions, to meet your budget goals, and then to meet the construction timeline as well.
Thanks.
Any other questions on that?
While you're still at San Diego.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You talked about the state aid component, which I think was $8.8 million. What time period does that get paid out to us and reimbursed to us?
So the state aid will be reimbursed on a 15- or 20-year cycle, depending on the type of project. So your project has, at many of your buildings, is heavy in additions, and the rule is, if it's a brand-new structure, aid is paid over 30 years. If it's a mostly an additions project, it's over 20 years, and if it's mostly reconstruction, it's over 15. So it'll be coming back to match and mimic the receipt or the payable debt service. We're going to match the two so that we can minimize the tax increase, but it will be paid over roughly 15 or 20 years.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And just to sum up, for those of you that are still with us, and that's a long presentation. These are our big ideas. Improve safety and security, additional classrooms for enrollment, redevelop the inadequate spaces, improve ADA, address the infrastructure, and do it all in a way that's respectful of our taxpayers while serving our kids well. That concludes our presentation, unless the board has any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Thank you to everybody.
Does anyone have questions? I have a couple of thoughts. Do you know, you start.
Oh, please do.
Yeah, go ahead.
How will, how will we decide which projects first, and how long would that take?
So let me try the first one. Tim, maybe you can help me with how long it takes to get a shovel in the ground. But, you know, Brian and I study the enrollment data. We also are mindful that some schools may hit a crunch earlier, even if there is no development. And so right now, if you asked me today, based on everything we know, we would likely prioritize Purchase Elementary School and Parsons Memorial School because that's where the most intense development is likely to occur. But as Tim knows, last time we engaged in this, we had multiple sites going at once. And we're also a little bit concerned about the Purchase School perhaps running out of space if we take the portables away to construct. And so we're looking at the possibility of keeping maybe two or three of those portable classrooms available and on-site. We haven't figured out where yet, but we are thinking about how that will happen. We're also working with the court right in Phase Two. When we take his portables away, how will he be able to accommodate kids in the building? But right now, priority one, A, one and one A would be Purchase and Parsons.
That's helpful to know. I have a question, just speaking. I know we've discussed a lot behind the scenes, but I think it would be really helpful for the community to understand what the day-to-day life would look like for the students, you know, and how it will be impacted by the construction.
Well, I don't want to be disingenuous and say there'll be no impact, but I will tell you that our principals have all now lived through a bond referendum, very successfully, I might add. Tim is dogged in making sure that everybody crosses every T and dots every I in terms of safety. We have a very talented construction management team who will work in advance of any development taking place, ensuring that there's a safety plan, there's an access plan, there's a flow. So I won't say there won't be a noisy day here or there, but we are really kind of insistent that kids not be disrupted. A lot of this work will happen in the summer, particularly the noisier parts, but there will be some unavoidably that will be challenging. For example, if we were to take the playground away from Purchase School, do we immediately relocate it? Where do we relocate it? If we do relocate it, we want to relocate it in a place that it won't be disturbed by new construction, but we also want it to be in a place that's safe. So all those things will be literally planned out on each site individually as we lay out how it's going to occur. Is that about right? Is there more to add there, Tim? And by the way, the principals will communicate with the parents directly about all of those things as they're occurring in real time. And I will say, you know, a compliment to our principals last time, they underwent major renovations, and they managed it with great communication, great planning. But good question.
I had one question. There was mention about the fact that none of this took into account assessments changing or the change in the assessments as new property comes on. I think it might be helpful, we talk about this in the context of the budget and how we have to take assessment, what assessments going up or down into account. Maybe, it might be helpful, I'm a big fan of your pizza pie explanation, but I think that it kind of reminding people that we have, we know from, from the presentation that there are all these, all this development going on. We know that that will come on the assessment rolls at some point and how that, how that impacts people.
Mrs. Megan, you know you could do this yourself.
I could, but I'm not going to.
But it's such a great question, and we, and I want to thank our financial advisors because they haven't baked in any assessment growth, if I'm right, into their projections. So things we expect... So things, we expect assessment, the assessments to grow over the next several years. We're optimistic. You know, I get a lot of questions about, is the town developing too fast, too much? That's not a question for me to answer, but I can tell you that when properties come onto the tax rolls, that's a good thing, because it evens out the load amongst more taxpayers. So the more people that are paying taxes, the more your assessed value increases, the more the distribution of cost is spread. And so I can't guarantee this, but I'm optimistic that some properties in the next several years, which have undergone loss of renovation or recently built, are going to start affecting our tax-based growth factor, which could help us in the long term. Is that an accurate statement? Would you like to add something to that, Mr. Whipple?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that, remember, in, in the town of Harrison and Westchester in general, we're always dealing with the previous year's assessment roll. So for the '23, '24 taxes that you'll be paying right now, we're dealing with the '22 assessment roll. So it stands to reason that a lot of the development you're seeing around town hasn't hit the, hasn't all hit the assessments yet, because we're still dealing with really an old roll, per se. So again, as Dr. Whipple said, we're optimistic, haven't factored any of this in, but it stands to reason, as the assessments go up, the numbers that we provided you are conservative in nature, and that people could potentially expect the cost for them to actually be, be less than what we're showing you right now. And obviously, we can't, we can't guarantee that, but that's, that's everything, all the indications point to that at this time.
And while you, you mentioned that, Tim, this median assessed value is a conservative number. So your, the impact of this referendum on your yearly tax bill would be about just under $300, $294. And that is a very conservative, it could be better. I mean, it's always possible it could be worse, but we, these guys have actually been very, very conservative in how they've approached this. As Mrs. Mangan just pointed out, they haven't factored in the likelihood that assessed value is going to go up, and they've been conservative on what they've determined the rates will be to protect against that. So I think, you know, it's, it's a very responsible financial plan. Other questions from the board? Well, I'm not surprised you don't have a million questions, because it, I don't know how many times I can say this, but this is a board that gets into the details. They have been actively involved. We didn't arrive here easily. Lots of meetings, lots of review, lots of sharing, lots of ideas, lots of listening. And so I think I have every confidence that we've done our due diligence. So thank you for everybody listening again.
Thank you. Thank you all. Super helpful. No more questions? We're good? Okay. Very thorough. We appreciate the time and attention from all of you. Moving on to the personnel report, I will take the personnel report on consent, unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, certificated personnel. One, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. Two, change of status. B, non-certificated personnel. One, resignation. Two, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Three, regular appointment, SED clearance submitted. Four, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Five, extra compensation appointment. Six, change of status. C, other. One, student, teacher, observer, SED clearance received. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent, unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, approval of Harrison High School Model Congress field trip to Washington DC for Princeton Model Congress competition. B, approval of revised policy, number 7410, extracurricular activities. C, approval of donation from the New York Community Trust for the E. Richard Dapper McDonald, McDonald Scholarship Fund. D, approval of CSE CPSC minutes. E, approval of CSE CPSC recommendations. F, approval of CSE CPSC annual reviews. G, approval of CSEA supplemental memorandum of agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Questions or comments?
Second. Second.
Questions or comments? I would like to give a very big thank you on behalf of the entire board to the New York Community Trust for their E. Richard Dapper Scholarship Fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve item A? Well, actually, yeah. Do I have a motion to approve item A? And then, okay, sorry, I'm going to read it first. A, resolution of Harrison Central School District, Westchester County, New York, adopted September 13, 2023, calling a special district meeting to authorize the expenditure of monies for school district purposes and a levy of a tax therefore. Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
I need a motion.
Oh, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Michelle, now would you please do a roll call? Yeah, I'm going to.
Questions or comments?
Oh, wait, sorry. Before we do the roll call, I'm so sorry, this is throwing me off. Questions or comments? Anybody?
No.
At this time, if you don't mind, Dan, if you could approach the podium and just give us a quick, brief summary of the resolution.
Of course. Good evening. The resolution you're considering tonight is essentially to call your bond referendum. It's called a special district meeting, and the resolution does several things. It not only establishes the date for the bond vote, which is November 16th, but it also sets forth the notice of the special district meeting, one which the district clerk will publish in your official newspapers, both in English and in Spanish. And the notice is very important, because it sets forth several things that are important to the voters. First of all, it tells them when they're voting, what time they're voting, where they're voting. And it also sets forth the bond proposition, which in a very general way describes everything that the superintendent was talking about and everybody else was talking about tonight, and sets forth the amount, the maximum amount that can be expended, which was talked about tonight as well. And it also authorizes the expenditure, as Tim was saying earlier, of up to $5 million from your capital reserve fund, which was established last fiscal year, which of course was May of this year. And that money would be used to offset and reduce the amount of taxes and bonds that would be issued for the project. In addition to the proposition, it also sets forth the rules and regulations for things that the district clerk is very familiar with: registration, absentee ballots, military ballots, which are new to the state of New York. And all of that is contained in the resolution, which is contained in the notice, and that's essentially what you'll be approving tonight. I would mention, this is not a bond resolution. The bond resolution would take place if there's a successful vote. That would be step two, if you will. We would come back and prepare the bond resolution for you after November 16th. This is merely calling the special district meeting, and the bond resolution, after a successful vote, not to get too deep into the weeds, but pledges the district's credit, pledges its faith and credit for the repayment of the bonds, and also some other administrative details. But that's, again, after the vote. But tonight, that's what this resolution does, and if anybody has any questions about the particulars of the resolution or the proposition, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Thank you. At this time, I will take the balance of the finance and facilities on consent, unless B, sale of used textbooks. C, resolution, resolution to appoint volunteer drivers. D, contract for educational services, MAYAPAC Central School District. E, 2023, '24 appropriation transfers. F, final 2022, '23 AS7 contract for Board of Cooperative Educational Services, BOCES. Do I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Our next regularly scheduled business meeting will take place on September 27, 2023, here at the Lewis M. Klein Middle School. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Have a wonderful night.